File with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December 24th, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda, we have some presentations on the situation with our dam. I believe we have Doug Walker, who's been doing a lot of the research on this, as well as members of the Environmental Commission. So maybe Doug, you want to start us off with where we are? And I know you did mention that we had Ellen Bob Brightley is also here, our engineer, that we did get an extension, which I think will be helpful. And we had a lot of decisions to make here, so go ahead. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, as the mayor mentioned, we did receive the notification of the extension through January 30th of 2022 for our plan and permit submission, final plan and permit application. They adjusted their schedule to say by June 30th of this year, 2021, we have to have a preliminary plan down to them, what we're going to be doing with the dam. So we have a lot of work to do between now and June 30th. I had shared the Environmental Commission's, they had some very good questions about moving forward with the breach. And I had sent it out to the mayor and council, the responses from Mark for federal engineering about the design of the breach would be at the 100-year storm level. Some of the other things that we would have to consider, the stream channel, how we would stabilize it. There was a concern about the wetlands near the railroad tracks. How would that be treated? So it looks like there'd be a deed restriction on the property. We can't do away with the wetlands. We did do a project in 2019 that helped considerably, I guess, the end of 2019. And we need some maintenance on that pipe to keep that clear. And we're having some backups there. That's on John's radar. Soon as the weather improves, his team will get out there and open it up. And I think we'll see an improvement like we did last year around the boathouse. So I don't know if you had an opportunity to read the questions and go through the responses from the engineer. But I think it kind of gives an overview of some of the things that we would be looking at if we do the breach. I think it's certainly doable. I think it would be, I think it would be a good project. We talked about it in finance briefly, and we talked about it in public work several times. It would reduce the, some further maintenance costs if we keep the dam. And also, as the regulations are changing, as the years go by, it would really reduce the exposure at the borough would have to do another remediation if we went with the, with the stream. The other thing that we pulled together was a list of tasks and the owners. If we were looking to proceed with the, with the dam removal. So everything before, everything down to number three, which is the owner interest discussions, the feasibility studies, which would be our professionals that we would have to call on different disciplines to do different testing, environmental folks, hydrologists. Then when you come up with conceptual plan, we have to do a preliminary design that we would need to send down to the DEP again by June 30th of 2021 to get their approval, to be in a position to final, to submit our final plan by the new January 30th, 2022 deadline. So we talked a little bit about the cost at the various meetings. And the senses, the cost would be pretty much the same. There isn't a huge savings in actually doing the project as a dam removal or remediation. The cost would be, the cost would be offsetting. So there isn't a benefit to one approach or the other. Again, future costs, the breach would help us with future costs and exposure for the, for the borough.
Hey Doug, didn't the breaching involve like a $300,000 of extra dredging or soil remediation?
There will be, yeah, there could be some extra. We don't have to breach. If we, if we do the reconstruction on the dam, we don't have to dredge it. We will have to remove some material probably, but not to the extent. And what may be, what we may be able to do is when we're redoing the trench for the stream, recreating the stream bed, we may be able to, depending on the level of contamination, we may be able to leave it onsite and cap it, which would be our help, which would be our hope.
Okay, and I guess I'm assuming by which indeed restricted, like if we did restore it to a stream, the footprint of the lake would have to remain wetlands or you couldn't use that for active recreation somehow?
No, I think, I think the, I think the area that's, that's high and dry now towards 202, I think that would still be open to us. We could still put a path around it. We'd have to get permits to do the path on the railroad track side. Just like we, you know, we applied and we have those in hand or ready to do a walking path. So we could continue doing the walking path. We could still do a bridge over by the police station to make it a loop. You know, we can do all those things. And as I had previously mentioned, I think we can, we can control that area around the boathouse by keeping the new drainage that we put in there a couple of years ago, keeping that functioning properly. I think that would be a big help. But we will have to deed restrict the senses, that area by the tracks, a portion of it between the boathouse and the railroad tracks would.
So Doug, you've mentioned the boathouse a couple of times. Is that the building that?
Yeah, the white building that's near the upper bridge. Yeah, we refer to that as the boathouse.
All right. Then to clarify Councilman Donahue's question, Doug, we're not saying that the entire footprint of the existing pond would be wetlands in the future. We don't, we don't know that, but that would be part of the evaluation.
That's correct.
Okay. So it may, it may or may not be, or some portion of it may be designated wetlands in the future, but not necessarily the whole thing.
Right. One of the things we talked about is as you're reducing the size of the pond, you know, the pond's coming in to create a stream. The portions of it that are under, under the pond now, portions of that on both sides may be wetlands, may be deeded as wetlands. And we would do native plantings in there and things like that.
Yeah. Doug, if we were to keep the pond wired, or is it necessary to dredge it?
My understanding is it's not necessary to drain, to dredge the pond if we did the reconstruction. But you can see it's silting in and all the time, you know, to make it, you know, a recreational area. You know, if you get up by the upper bridge by the firehouse, you can see that's almost completely silted in when it comes from the bridge there. So that's just going to continue to happen. It's not a requirement, but I think it's something the borough would want to do.
So make sure that I understand. You're saying that there's no significant cost difference between remediation or removal, but in your opinion, that the, the future costs would be less with restoring the dam rather than removing it? Is that correct?
No, the future cost would be less with the removal.
Okay, I had it backwards. Okay.
Yeah.
Glad I asked.
Bob, did you want to add anything, Brightly?
No, I think Doug's got a pretty good handle on it. You know, a lot of the initial work is really going to be done by, you know, environmental consultants. So from, you know, far end, it's more hydraulics and, you know, what the channel can handle.
Okay, just a question. Do we know how long it's been a pond and not a stream? You know when it was first created with dam?
Do not know that. We can certainly find that out. I know it was rebuilt in 1976, so it was there prior to that. Now I've seen photos of the old building and it was actually a stream and it was turning the wheel.
It was sometime in the 40s or 50s after a hurricane. Somebody had said that at one of our previous meetings.
Was it, yeah?
Built in the 50s?
That's what I remember. Don't hold me to it, but it was something after a hurricane and then there was a lot of flooding.
Okay.
I have another question for Dave Neal.
Yeah. Okay. I don't know, at this point, Johanna, did you want to comment?
Oh, here you go. Yeah, okay. Yes, thank you. I appreciate the response from Harrow for my questions. I got a lot of comfort from it, but I also got a few more questions from it. I want you to know, I was very concerned about the flooding because I know there's a sanitation operation below. I wanted to know how that would affect it. I'm just going down the list. I'm still concerned about the 500-year storms. That seems to be what people are beginning to calculate. I know that the nature conservancy is saying 102. I don't, not sure why, I guess, because it's much more tedious to do it the other way. I'm not sure about this control structure. Is that going to allow wildlife through it? Because that's the big push that environmentalists are concerned about. So it seems like if there's a structure there, how does that really work? And I see the word salvage and relocate fish, which is another environmental concern. And I'm wondering, Chris, if we're going to introduce fish, it's not going to come from my mountain, which is no longer a category one stream. It's very much compromised. You could probably introduce them after that control structure. If that's, if that's an interest. The wet area, I called it a wet area and not wetlands because I know how touchy the NJDEP is about wetlands and understandably so. But I kind of thought that was manmade and it could be corrected from up above. And I didn't know, I did not, I did not trace that. But I would think that we want to make sure that that's not carrying pollutants and know really what that source is because it's not coming from the pond. It's not a natural kind of wetlands that you might anticipate. About, I heard somebody say, and I don't know if it was at a past council meeting or from my own commission, about regulations that they were concerned, well, we're just going to have more regulations for the bridge, for the dam. However, they have regulations for streams too. In the time that I've been EC, they went from 150 on either side of a category one to 300. They're a little touchy about bridges. So if streams turn out to have problems with non-point pollution, I would not be surprised if the DEP does not have regulations about that. And also, when you do, do your engineering and however you're going to consult it, I'd like to know about cost for repairing the, the structure that you're going to need to get past the police station in our buildings because those need repair also. If you look at Raritan, Natarar, or even on the mountain, you can see that those structures, the stones, however you do it, they need repair. And that should also be equated, I think, in it. So I just want, my purpose was to make sure that as many things that I knew that might relate to the environment are considered and that we do not endorse something that either really doesn't truly benefit wildlife habitat or could down the road cause problems with flooding. But it seems like you had a lot of answers for me and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Johanna.
Go ahead. Does the Environmental Commission have an official recommendation?
No, I know 20 years ago or so, I went on an all-day field trip. And I've been knowing about dam removals being very popular, but it's very controversial all over the country. Whenever you have an issue, it's controversial whenever you are thinking about removing it. I did not, I will not have my commission divide up, you know, on either way, to or not. I don't think it would be beneficial. I very much appreciate my commissioners. However, I gave them my reasons. I listened to their reasons and I invited them to come and speak their mind. I really look for diversity. I'm glad I have a diverse commission, but I do not, I cannot tell you. I wrote that without engineering experience and without the advantage of a hydrogeologist. That is what I truly believed and I wanted this council to know.
Thank you. One thing I noticed, Doug, on the list of tasks, you do have, the first thing is borough and community interest. And I think something like this, we probably want to have some input from the community.
Agreed.
I think that's going to be an interesting discussion because I know people are very fond of the pond.
I mean, either way, this is going to have a dramatic impact on our near, long-term debt plan, so.
Yes. And the other thing was, you did mention funding sources outreach. Are there funds available to offset some of these costs that you know of?
There are, there are some grants that are available. We'd have to make application and hopefully it would be successful. We'd have to develop a plan that we could send in with the application, just like we do with our NJDOT grants.
Right.
So we'd have to get down the road and kind of pick a course, which way we want to proceed to see if we would be eligible for that funding.
Other grants, are they skewed one way or another for the amount of funding that's available? Take, you know, remediation or take it down?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any grants that are available for remediation, reconstruction of the dam, keep the dam. I know there's some funding available for the removal. Dam Safety runs a program. I think it's still 2%, but it's a loan. And I think the borough could do better, you know, with our financial situation, we could do better in the open market than 2%. But I'm not aware of any funding to remediate, to reconstruct dams.
Doesn't, doesn't New Jersey Transit have to partner with us in this? I remember there was a discussion about that, no?
Yeah, they're also copied on the letter on the extension.
So the question I have is similar to.
Well, that's a good thing. It's a good, the reason why I bring that up is because it's, it's a positive move for the borough that they're recognizing transit as a shared owner. We talked a little bit briefly at the last finance meeting and they're a very small piece of the pie, but there will be a contribution there, maybe, I don't know, you know, 15% depends on the design we come up with.
Well, that was going to be my question. I was going to follow up on Councilman Donahue's question was, if we either replace or remove the dam, does that affect the contribution from New Jersey Transit?
It potentially could, yes.
Which one would be more favorable to us?
Financially, two, I would, I would think the reconstruction because we're going to be going, going onto their property and they're going to have to pay for that portion. You know, the engineering and the reconstruction of that part. They have some leaking along the toe of the dam. I don't think there's anything major on their property. So it's certainly not going to be a windfall for the borough to do that.
So I'm sorry, Doug, I, I'm kind of getting the terms confused. So the, the contribution from New Jersey Transit might be proportionally more if we remove the dam or if we keep it?
If we, if we keep it.
If we keep it, their, their contribution might be somewhat more.
Right.
But in either case, we're talking about, you know, low, low double digits or single digits contribution?
Yes.
Okay, in either case.
And who determines that formula by how much percentage they're responsible?
Yeah, I think what we'd have to do is we have to partner with them and actually negotiate that out. You know, what portions they're, they're going to have to contribute to. Obviously, the engineering of the project, but you know, how much engineering is, is actually going to take place on their section of that? We're very close to the tracks. Most of the area that we have to raise and armor is on borough property. So there will be some contribution to Tom's point, but it's not going to be, I don't think it's a deal breaker either way. You know, for what course of action the council would like to take.
I know we're currently investigating potential grant stuff, but the ones that you're aware of, would those percentage wise of the cost of the project be like half the cost of the project that we might get funding for or smaller or more than that?
Yeah, I think it would be, just from looking at the grants, I think it'll be a small percentage because the size of our dam, it is, it is a high hazard dam, but it doesn't, doesn't go to the level of, you know, a 68-foot-high dam. That's 200 feet long with a town below it, you know? We're not, we're not into that situation. So, you know, I think we will be able to get some funding, hopefully. I mean, there are grants that we can apply for, but it seems like we're kind of in the, you know, almost a little bit in the middle there. If you have like, there's a lot of really small dams on the Meskenetka. And they're like, if you're familiar with the little hip wall that's below the spillway and then you go through, you have like those, the corrugated, the teeth. Then you get below that and there's a wall that's probably three and a half feet high. Those are the dams that the Meskenetka and other rivers, they get some funding for. They're an easy fix, easy to take care of. And then you have the really high dams, the really big, high, you know, class one dams. And they seem to be, you know, they cost, you know, $10 million to remediate. Those are the dams that, you know, Army Corps of Engineers, you know, different agencies like that want to get in. FERC, different, different organizations like that are willing to get involved in and support.
You called this, Doug, you called this a high hazard dam. That's the first time I've heard that term used to describe our dam.
I believe it was 2017, the classification was changed from the class two to a class one high hazard dam because of the ball fields below and, you know, some of the other, other facilities. We have the, you know, the public works facilities below.
So it's, it's high hazard, not because it's at risk of imminent failure, but it's high hazard because of the ramifications should it fail. Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Correct.
Anybody else? Is that Christie? Let me see you there from Raritan Headwaters.
Hi, everyone.
You want to weigh in on this?
Christie McDonald, Raritan Headwaters Association. I'm the science director there, but I'm also a resident of Burnersville and on the Environmental Commission. And Johanna did a good job of putting together questions. And a lot of the members like Doug and Johanna have participated in recent workshops. Mayor Canos, you may have also, I'm not sure if you were involved in that, on dam removal. I think if you're still considering that, and dams are basically not good for water quality in general, but because you have water sitting behind a dam, heating up, sediments are getting trapped there. They're expensive because they have to be remediated and repaired every few years of certain amount of time. But then there's the connection to the pond, which is in the middle of town. So you'd have to really get all the partners together and have some kind of outreach event, as you mentioned. But I think a good place to start would be to invite, we could invite the Fish and Wildlife Service, Natural Resource Conservation Service. They're the ones, the federal agencies that will pay for taking dams down. And we recently removed a dam on a Lamington. It took about three years of planning, really making sure all the partners were informed, had a chance to weigh in. And that was on Raritan Headwaters Preserve, so we owned it, so we had a choice. So it's always the owner of the dam, which is, I guess, the municipality. And it sounds like, I didn't know the Department of Transportation also owns it. But I'd be happy to help organize a meeting involving the Environmental Commission and, you know, the municipality and meeting with Fish and Wildlife Service and others to look at it. So you at least have a sense of ecologically how important it is to take it down and whether it's worth pursuing. Because, you know, you have some good fish populations downstream. They can't get back upstream. And, you know, taking down dams is also good for that, for fish migration and movement and just generally for water quality. And I think over time, that pond is filling in because it makes that hard turn under the fire station and the water slows down and the sediments drop out. So I, I am assuming it's going to have to be dredged at some point in order to keep it as a pond. Otherwise, you're going to have, you have a nice little wetland already forming right there with the sediments and wetland vegetation starting to grow on it right by the boathouse.
Yeah.
So reach out if you would like to have another meeting. We're happy to help organize it.
That's terrific. Thank you. That would be a big help, I think. So our next steps, Doug, would be?
Maybe we have a meeting. Maybe we have a meeting as, as was just suggested.
Yeah.
Pull something like that together.
Yeah, and I know, you know, Christie has, has all those contacts and I think would be a big help. So thank you for offering, I think.
Yeah, helping reach out to Christie, that'd be great.
Yeah.
I'll be in touch.
It's probably worthwhile to move over to the public hearing or discussion on this. I mean, like I'm supportive of taking the dam down. I've heard other council persons say similar. I think it's probably, we need to start having that conversation with the borough. They understand why we're considering this, what the financial implications are. Because this will be some communication and adoption that's going to be required.
Yeah, but I think, you know, we need to gather all our information first so that we can answer questions, I think. And then, yeah, I agree. And then involve the public.
There's a potentially large cost with the sediment and the need for dredging. Is there a way, so Doug, you've mentioned a couple of times that we don't know whether it's contaminated or not. Is there a way to get samples down that would give us any information so that we would know whether that's something we would have to do or something we could avoid?
Yeah, we know there's contamination there because when we tried to dredge it in, I guess it was 2022, I believe, there was some dredging that went on. And unfortunately, because of the pollutants, it had to be, we thought we could take it locally. I believe that all the material had to be taken to Pennsylvania and the cost was double or triple what we thought it was going to be for that. So we do know that there are some issues with sediment. We could probably make an LSRP and go ahead and do some of those tests. I don't know how extensive we want to get with that. I mean, this is all information we're going to need to now. But maybe we can get some pricing and I can come back to the council at some pricing for some of the different, different things that we have on our punch list that we would have to do specifically under the feasibility study item, all the items under number two. We can get more detailed pricing on that, what that would cost to move forward. And that would, that would give us some additional information.
Because it sounds like we're going to have to deal with that sediment either way, whether we remove the dam or not.
Right, if we reconstruct the dam somewhere along the line, we're not going to have to do it immediately, you know, as part of the reconstruction project. But I think we are going to have to address, you know, the sediment and the silt that, and the silt being in that's happening, you know, in the pond.
Right. I guess the reason why I bring it up is because that's an unknown cost right now. But it's, my guess is it's not going to be insignificant. And so if people look at that and say, well, we don't want to remove the dam because we'd have to deal with that. Well, that's a pay me now or pay me later proposition. We're going to do it either way at some point.
Right, right. For the meeting, a future meeting, would we want to do that as a special meeting versus a council meeting?
I won't answer that, but I think we need to be mindful of a timeline. If we have to have a plan by June 31st, we're, we're not that far away.
Yeah. I would say first, why don't you meet with Christie and, you know, the smaller group? And then we can maybe have them come to a larger group and present what they're, what you've uncovered.
Okay.
If that works.
We definitely want to have answers at a meeting, or at least have the options in front of us for people to have a fully informed discussion, A or B.
Yeah. Okay, so maybe you can get that set up quickly.
Go ahead and we'll get some pricing for those items under number two.
Okay. Yeah. Great. Thank you for all that. All right, we will now move on to our public open session. So if anyone from the public would like to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes. You can raise your hand in the participant list or put it in the chat, you know, if you want to ask a question. And we don't have a chat, do we? Sorry. No. Anthony, our clerk, will hold up the timer so you know how long your three minutes are. Please give your name and address. And I see we have, Peter Bernbaum has raised his hand. Peter, are you there?
I am here.
Okay.
Question, a couple of things is there's obviously a lot of trade-offs. Either way, there's going to be some dredging either today or tomorrow by their, by the situation. Question is, if we breach the dam, what liability or measures are we going to potentially be required by the state under current regulations for, you know, any flows that are coming down the stream? Once, once it's open and all of that has been engineered and done, is the borough out of harm's way? That's the first question. I guess I ask that for perhaps Doug and Mr. Brightly. Um, number two is, if Mr. Brightly happens to know how many dams have been upgraded and, and had to be, um, come up with remediation plans in the last, uh, three years, uh, since we've had a number of, um, hundred year storms that have been, um, beyond, um, previously thought possibilities, uh, and they're closer to five hundred year storm. How, how many dams have been asked to make significant emergency improvements in the last three years? And then finally is, um, there's, uh, I guess that's really it, is, you know, if it's breached, are we done? Um, because we're always on the hook if we have a dam and the state changes its mind, or if the climate events continue to get more, more severe, um, over time. Nobody knows that. One thing we do know is that if we've breached the dam, it's breached, that's it. Um, so perhaps Mr. Brightly and Doug can answer those two questions. Liability and how many, um, communities have had emergency, uh, actions by the state because of, um, the changes in the water flows.
I'd like to jump in, Peter. What I'd like to do is go back to Ferraro Engineering, the folks that are actually working on the, on the dam project. Bob isn't, I mean, Bob is, is in it, but he's not the folks that are actually coordinating it and the real handful. So I'd like to go back to them about your question about how many dams in the last three to five years have been, uh, reconstructed, um, and to what standard they were done. So I'll get that information back to you.
I don't mean necessarily reconstructed, but have been ordered to make, you know, changes and improvements because of, you know, rapidly changing, um, circumstances that nobody could predict. They may not have been done, but they may have been ordered.
Yeah. Um, the, the other, the other part of your question is that the stream, with the streams course, the flows, um, and the volumes would all have to be engineered to, to prevent as, as much as possible, the downstream flooding during a hundred year event. Even now, I mean, even if you remediate the dam or reconstruct the dam to a hundred year, which is the requirement, um, there's always a possibility that there can be flooding. You can never, I don't think you could engineer, I don't think it would be practical cost wise, and, you know, the dimensions you'd have to have to, to engineer something that could never fail or never, uh, flood. I mean, the cost would be astronomical.
Right. Things change anyway.
Right, so, um, but all those precautions, that's why we would be going through all these steps.
Right.
All these professionals to, you know, the width of the stream, you know, all those other considerations would have to be taken into account, um, before it would be given engineering approval.
Right.
We'll say, uh, to move ahead with, with a breach.
And just for clarification, how far downstream are we, um, responsible for? And then, once it's done, are we done?
As far as, um, the flows.
Yeah.
I think they go through the whole, they, they would move through the entire inundation area now.
But within the boroughs, limits or, or to, I mean, down to New Brunswick, or how far does it go?
No, 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 there, there would, there would be limits, uh, to how far we would have to look. But we have the inundation map that shows if there is a failure and a flood, you know. We, I, I, I think that would be kind of our baseline, that would be the area that we would be focused on.
And then, once the work is done, are we done? Unlike a dam where you have to keep on redoing.
Um, I think there's, I think anytime you have a water course going through your town, there, there's going to be some issues.
Yeah, but I mean, that's-
I, I don't think, I don't think we'll ever be done, done. Um, I think there's, I think you're less likely to have, um, major costs.
Yeah, okay, it's, it's banks or court, okay.
If you reconstruct the dam, you know you're going to have inspections moving forward. You know, every two years, you're going to have the inspections, you're going to have repairs you're going to have to make. That's just an ongoing thing. I think a stream is, is probably, um, less maintenance.
It's stormwater management, basically, at that point.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
Okay, um, Johanna, you had a, a question or a statement?
No, I just wanted to, uh, see if this is my only opportunity to address the March 3rd, uh, NJ, uh, the, um, New Jersey DEP stormwater thing. I have, uh, a couple of things, I was going to make comments on my comments, but I see that, uh, um, Christie's here. If she was going to speak to it, or if this is not the appropriate time, uh, let me know.
Um, well, this is the only public session, um, for this meeting, the second meeting of the month, we have two. This, we only have one. So if there's a statement you'd like to make, this would be the time.
Okay. Johanna, I was just following up on you. Um, just, you know, about stormwater and the importance of, um, or local ordinances. So feel free to go ahead.
Bob can certainly help us with that.
Mayor, can I ask a question? We're just introducing the, uh, stormwater ordinance. So there will be another open session in the next meeting as well for comments on stormwater, uh, to, to Johanna's question. So we have this meeting, and then we also have next meeting where we get our comments as well.
Well, this is just, yeah, it's the introduction. The next meeting would be the public hearing. Um, but if somebody wants to comment before it's introduced during public session, they certainly can.
Sure, sure.
So just because I submitted the comments, and I thought, in case there are any questions, or I'd like to just quickly clarify, um, and, uh, Christie actually knows more about this than I do. So jump in there or, you know, add anything, Christie, uh, or even Curry if you'd like. Um, I just wanted to clarify my views about the NJDEP, um, allowing, uh, you to do more stringent, uh, controls. And it's, it's a very simple reason. They have a whole lot on their plate, you know, lead in their city water and offshore dumping, all kinds of things. Um, so small things like my first thing of, of, uh, the minor, the property size that, that should be responsible for the stormwater runoff, I think that's significant. And I found out, um, recently because a lot of municipalities, in response to this, um, requirement by the NJDEP, um, there's a little heightened awareness about stormwaters and, and what municipalities should be doing to, uh, in, uh, ensure enforcement of it and tweaking any kind of, um, their, uh, ordinances. Uh, so it, it's perfectly legitimate, and not only that, it's really encouraged. Uh, so I just want to make sure that we understood that. Um, I kept it really simple. I'm, uh, going to have a subcommittee, uh, because so much more has come to the surface, as I just said, um, to really look at it. But, uh, I didn't want you to think that my last comment was that the last, uh, point that I had, the fourth point, I made a mistake in the third point, um, I meant, um, permeable. Um, but in that fourth, I kind of threw it back to our experts and the boards and our zoning officer, because I think the Environmental Commission has the responsibility of, um, making, or helping educate the public and our municipal authority to understand why we think it's so important to manage stormwater. But really, it's, um, it's, uh, Mr. Brightly who deals with this all the time, and Mr. Price that, um, does the zoning. Really, all of this has to be put together, the legalities of it, by Mr. Pigeon, uh, to really do the best thing that we possibly can for our particular municipality to work on stormwater, which, uh, really, I can't think of anything more important for an environmental commission, and perhaps the, uh, municipality is to protect our water, both quantity and quality. So, um, I, I didn't want it to seem like I was relinquishing my responsibility, but I really think that we have to do whatever we can to enforce it and for people to comply. And if we don't do that, then it doesn't matter how serious we are about it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I see, Carrie Hazelman, is that you? Has her hand up?
And I'll give you a picture. Let's see. Hi, everybody. Hi, hi. Uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to just, uh, say a few words about the stormwater regulations. I know that we're under a tight deadline. I hope that there is some leeway in that, that we don't have to have all our ducks in a row in our stream by early March, because that's going to be difficult to do, I realize. But I would just, um, to build on what Johanna was saying, encourage the council just to think about the topography of our town, how we have basically two hills that come, they start on the hills and we end up at, we end up in the valley of the mine brook running through, where all of our, all of our infrastructure. And, and that means the stormwater is all coming down to that one spot. I just would encourage you to, 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 even though it would be probably more work, to, to make sure that what we come up with is dovetailed to our unique situation and not a one size fits all, uh, DEP idea of what, what could work. I would hate to see us not do enough or, or do things that, um, were unnecessary while there were other things that were shunted to the side or hadn't been considered by the DEP because they don't know Bernersville. We do, and our experts do. And I think that we should think about, um, looking at some of the model ordinances that may come out of ANJEC and other areas to, to look at our unique areas that are just so localized for this, for this region, and maybe build off that in addition to looking at the DEP, um, once in size fits all solution. And that would be what I would consider, would hope that you guys would all do, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie. That was a good point.
I, I had asked the question of Mr. Pigeon last time, I think, whether, whether we could get an extension beyond the, the March 3rd date. Uh, my understanding was, that's, that's a pretty firm date, that, uh, we, we might get a little bit of wiggle room, but not the whole lot. Is that correct?
That, that's right. Based on my, uh, conversations with Mr. Brightly, we, we felt that, uh, that that is a hard and fast deadline, but probably if we get it in within a reasonable time, there wouldn't be any repercussions.
We don't, really don't have, Carrie, we don't have a whole lot of luxury of being able to-
No, I realize that, I realize that. But maybe if we looked at those ANJEC model ordinances, it might not take too much time to look at that and, uh, see if that was a better fit for us, because they are local to us. Um, Great Swamp Watershed and Raritan Headwaters would be good, uh, resources for us.
And speaking of Raritan Headwaters, um, Christie has her hand up, so.
Hi, tag teaming it here. Um, yeah, Carrie had a lot of excellent points, and I'm not going to say too much because I'll, you know, if there's going to be a larger hearing, that would be great. Um, I know that the, you're basically fulfilling, um, the minimum new DEP requirements for the stormwater ordinance, and that's due by March 3rd, but that, but I still think we're going to need to, um, look at some other possible, um, additions to the ordinance, um, down the road. And, um, that's going to be a goal. The Environmental Commission, Raritan Headwaters, other organizations want to help, um, to look at some solutions. Um, so we know that stormwater is the major source of pollution right now to our waterways and the ocean. So everything that comes off the land eventually gets into the water. Um, our old fashioned infrastructure tries to get water off our property and quickly out into our streams. Um, that's a problem because we don't recharge our aquifers, and we all, a lot of us rely on wells, so we do need that. Um, and we're, we're bringing that pollution right out into the waterways. We need to address that by taking responsibility, because we're all contributing. Every single one of us has a home that has driveways or buildings, so there's a lot of impervious cover. Um, that exacerbates the problem. The other issue is, um, as Peter said, things are changing, and we know climate is changing. We're getting a lot more rain in New Jersey. We're getting a lot bigger storm events. So we get large storm events, millions of gallons of water are rushing into our streams, and it causes a lot of damage. Um, it causes damage to property, causes erosion. Um, it causes damage to the stream itself, to the ecosystem of the stream. And as we see by the pond, it brings a lot of sediments down into the, into our, um, waterways. So, um, you know, the, there's a new bill that is going to require municipalities to address climate vulnerability in their master plans. And I think that this, uh, a very strong local stormwater ordinance, um, you know, stronger than the basic DEP requirement, is something that's going to be necessary for our municipality, um, to save money and address that major problem. So I, one more thing, can I just say one thing in specific about this? Is that, um, one of the problems is in requiring stormwater, um, plans and maintenance plans on, um, major and minor, um, development is a, is a critical thing, but it really has to be enforced and checked. Um, stormwater, you know, infrastructure really should, it's moving toward green infrastructure, so using nature through, um, trees, bioswells, rain gardens. That's going to have to be something that we, we try to, um, encourage more in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Christie. Uh, anyone else from the public wish to be heard at this time? I'm not seeing any other hands up. Nope, um, then I will close the public session. Um, so now we are, we do not have any public hearings on ordinances, but we do have, uh, an introduction. And again, this is the stormwater regulations that we were just discussing, um, which would be ordinance 2021-1872. Um, would someone like to introduce it?
Mayor, before it gets introduced, may, may I have a comment, please?
Absolutely.
So my, I brought this up the last meeting. So my major issue with this particular ordinance is a continuation of the minor regulation, specifically for the inspection on a yearly basis. The primary issue is one of enforcement, and the only solution for enforcement that I've heard that's a good solution is a deed restriction. Um, I understand this provision to be more stringent than the state. And until we either find, I, I'm looking for an opportunity to have enforcement that's on the books, that does not have deed restriction involvement, or this to be removed from the ordinance before it goes forward.
And I, if I can just ask, um, Jeff Price, I think we talked about some kind of form or something you were going to work on? Oh, you're, you're muted, Jeff.
Mayor, if I could comment when you get a chance, it's-
Yes, sure. Uh, yes, the, one of the alternates would be to, uh, require at, at the sale of a house for the new owners to know that they have a stormwater management system on their property. Uh, so, you know, last year, we, uh, we had a hundred and seventy houses sold. Maybe there was ten, twelve that had these stormwater facilities. But that doesn't trap a hundred percent of these, uh, these facilities every year. It only would, it would only trap the, the houses that were sold that had stormwater on them.
Okay, uh, Bob, you want to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, just, I guess there's two parts. We talk about the minor and the, and the major. And just if I could quickly touch on the major aspects, as you know, in 2020, the DEP amended their rules. And, um, under, they also changed the terms of the borough's stormwater permit that requires the borough to adopt the new, uh, stormwater rules by March 2nd. And I think it's rather than waiting on that, um, if you were going to consider more stringent rules, um, we need to adopt that new definition of the major developments. And also, there's a requirement in there that stormwater management, um, requirements are met using green infrastructure. So if, you know, you move forward and adopt the, the major revisions, and you can always come back. There's no timeframe, you know, being more stringent. As far as the minors, uh, we had tried, I think we had recommended previously, Jeff and I, about putting a deed notice in, um, which was just a notice to let a future property owner know that there are stormwater management facilities on their property. The changes that we proposed to the new ordinance, uh, they don't have that requirement for a deed notice or a deed restriction. They're not in here. Um, but there is some rewording in, in the way the existing ordinance is written. What we had done, the, the old ordinance, I guess, goes back to like 2006, 2007, added the minor development category, because what you had is a big gap between a major development, which was, you know, 10,000 square feet of impervious surface acre of disturbance. And you had a requirement for a dry well on a roof area of 500 square feet. But you didn't really have anything if you had a 9,000 square foot parking lot. Um, there was no stormwater rules in the borough's ordinance. So back around 2006, '07, and this is an ordinance that's in several towns. I think Berners Township has a similar ordinance, uh, Far Hills, Bedminster, Mendham, Mendham Township, where the minor, uh, for a thousand square feet of impervious surface, up to 10,000 square feet for the major, the ordinance was added to require some kind of infiltration device. And, uh, the ordinance, as written, says that the private entity needs to maintain that facility and submit- the ordinance, as written, says that the private entity needs to maintain that facility and submit a report. We had recommended that the deed notice be put in place because we did have a case where somebody built a house, had a dry well, sold the house, the new owner put a shed on top of the dry well. They had no idea it was there. And situations like that, that we felt there should be, you know, a notice that if you buy a house, there's a dry well on it and you should maintain that dry well. But it's not in this change. We took it out because we have a limited time to get this adopted. But the requirement to maintain it and submit a report annually is still in there. It's slightly reworded. And the reason is because we had prepared the maintenance plan ourselves to give to the property owners because we found we were getting, some engineers were submitting a book, you know, 30-page booklet on maintaining a dry well. And we didn't think that was really necessary, so we came up with a two-page, you know, manual, basically, introduction describing what you had to do and then a form to be submitted. So the form would be at least the same from each property owner, giving us the same form.
So, Bob, but this language for minor restrictions in the annual report, this is more conservative than the DEP currently, correct?
Yes. Well, the DEP does not regulate anything below a major development, not yet anyway. So, yes, it's, you don't need to have it, but you have a big gap.
That's my primary concern, being more restrictive than the current state. It's putting hardship on the homeowner that I don't believe that we should put on. So that's my objection, and I'd like to see it from that.
It might be beneficial to the neighbor, though, that if they know that the stormwater is not going to impact their property. And so it's kind of, it's a, what's reasonable? I think that's where we ended up with this 1,000 square feet.
Bob, saying that this minor development thing is common for our surrounding towns, or is it uncommon in our surrounding towns?
Well, I know Bernards Township, you can go and look at their, I think it's more restrictive and they actually charge a fee for inspections every year, but it's the same 1,000 square feet. When the ordinance was changed in 2006, you had a 500 square foot for a roof, and that stayed in there. Some people on the planning board didn't want to remove that. But Far Hills, Bedminster, Mendham, Borough, Mendham Township, I know there's several towns, a lot of towns have stormwater requirements for, you know, other projects that are not majors. But it's just, you know, it's it's just based on the area that you're adding impervious surface.
It sounds to me like with this ordinance, you're trying to strike a balance between what's reasonable, enforceable, and, you know, what's just open season, you know, to the minimum requirements required by the state. It seems like some of the other surrounding towns have tried to take a similar approach. Is that right?
That's correct. I mean, if you didn't have it, you could build a 9,000 square foot parking lot, 30, 35 cars. And there's nothing in your ordinance. It's not a roof.
With regard to the minor developments, is the inspection and, you know, I guess the penalties, is that new to this ordinance versus the old one?
No, the only thing that was added was the requirement to, once a year, measure whether the thing's draining. But it's always been a requirement to, like I said before, we've had, some engineers will submit a maintenance manual that required, you know, inspection four times a year. We thought it was excessive, so we asked for, once a year, to go out and look at the dry well. They have an inspection port, open it up, measure if there's water in it, and go out there after a heavy rainstorm. Does it drain? Because if it doesn't drain, it's either going to get cut off or it's just going to, you know, run off with uncontrolled. And so it's basically, once a year.
And is that something, Bob, that a homeowner is capable of doing on their own?
A lot of them do. Some of them we get from landscapers. A lot of people just don't submit them.
And the measurement of the, I'm sorry, Mary, the drainage drain, that's in the current ordinance? And also the one that we were considering, you know, tonight?
Basically, it says that they are required to maintain in accordance with a maintenance plan and submit a report annually. It doesn't say to measure the water level. That's something that I added because that is in the dry well maintenance requirements. We put that, like I said, we prepared the maintenance manual because we were getting, you know, a lot of engineers are being lazy, I think, and taking their maintenance manuals for major developments, which can get quite lengthy, and they were just passing them on as a minor development.
So it sounds to me like what you did was you streamlined, standardized, and simplified what this annual inspection is supposed to be.
We tried to, so that, you know.
So, Tom, the issue is not annual inspection, the issue is the enforcement and/or mandate of it. If there is a simple procedure that essentially is a checkbox in our borough that somebody's done it or not, I'm okay. When you start messing up.
We're losing you, John.
Putting undue costs, because there's also a cost with actually having to do this on an annual basis, because from what I understand, these manholes can weigh 150, 200 pounds. That's where I'm not willing to go.
But is your objection that is tied to the deed, or is your objection that the minor category is there at all? Because my understanding, unless I misunderstood Mr. Brightley wrong, the part about the deed has been removed.
So, but it's been removed here, but it has not officially been removed, you know, in the enforcement side, Jeff. And that's, for me, those two things have to inevitably be tied, right?
But the deed was never in there.
Because it was never in this ordinance. The deed piece was a fix that was proposed to this ordinance, and these two things just happened to coincide.
But unless I missed it, it's not there, the document we were asked to review, is it? I didn't see it.
No, no, it's not that.
So what are we discussing? You're concerned about it being tied to the deed. I understand it, I get that, but it's not there.
Well, we took that out. Well, we didn't put it in. We didn't think we could sneak it by you because we have a short window here to get this ordinance adopted, so we knew there was some problems with it. So it's not in here. Like I said, the only difference is just the requirement to measure if there's water in the dry well, does it drain?
So, Jeff, by removing it, it left the issue of enforcement unresolved.
But to me, it's not. In a minor development, in number five, where where the stormwater field is not adequately maintained, the borough has a right to perform that and backcharge the owner. Is that new, or is that something that was still there?
Yeah, it was in on, it was.
The A5, I think it is, in the minor. I'm sorry, two, you know.
That was, it was in, it was D before. It's, I don't know, what copy, what portion you have of the ordinance, but the redlined. You know, one thing that we tried, we, the old ordinance basically had indicated that this maintenance requirement applies to both minor and major developments. And I split it into two sections. We can't do anything about what the state requires now for a major development. They have new standards and a little more strict on the maintenance. So we broke it up into two parts. And part D basically read, if the stormwater facilities are not adequately maintained by the private owners, the borough shall retain a right to perform required maintenance and charge the property owner accordingly. So that's the same language. It's just put into the minor section.
So, Bob, over the years, we've got a number of pages of an Excel spreadsheet. How many minors do you think we have now, total?
I think we have, like, I'm trying to, I have an email on this. I think it might be like in the 68, 70s.
So every year, we expect to see an annual report, and it should arrive on your desk on April the 1st.
That's the way the ordinance is set up, yeah.
All right. And what's your feeling on how many of those 70 actually get to you on an annual basis?
Hold on, I have a just give me a minute here. So we have 83 minor developments that are, you know, since this ordinance was adopted, and I think 16 majors. I think the majors, we were getting about 33% submitted, and the minors were somewhere in the 48% to 50%.
And have we actually then gone back out and fixed them and charged them?
No, no. So we had 30.
Bob, did you do anything with the reports when you get them? Is there any purpose to the report?
Well, I know, you know, we file them. I scan them and keep them on file. I know we could be audited by the DEP. We're more concerned about the majors. We have, so we had actually 35 out of 63.
And Bob, that's sort of my point, you know, like if it's not required for minor developments, and essentially we're creating paperwork in.
I lost you.
For many of these homeowners, open the thing up. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So, I mean, so my point in this being, so if the annual report is not required, and I'm only talking about for land residents at this point, we don't do anything with it, and yet we're imposing an additional restriction on homeowners. We're discussing about how we enforce things that may be complicated for them. I say we drop those two points, three and four, and move on with the ordinance as it is. So removing the inspection and maintenance log form required to be submitted on April 1st, and penalties for not compliance shall be in accordance with penalty provision. But retain the number five, if stormwater soils are not adequately maintained by private owners, the borough shall retain the right to perform required maintenance and charge the entity accordingly.
We would have no idea whether it was not maintained or not without some sort of reporting and inspection process. Another way to look at it, rather than drop it, is to say, let's come up with an inspection and enforcement plan that's workable, that's reasonable. You don't just say, well, we haven't been inspecting it, we haven't been enforcing it, so let's do away with it. If you think it's a good idea for the borough, if you think it's a worthwhile thing to have, then let's keep it and figure out how to enforce it.
Yeah.
Well, I'll disagree with you there. I guess we're going to have to be opposed on this one.
Okay.
And my argument also, by the way, is that the state or the DEP requires a minimum. You know, there's a lot of things we do that exceed the minimum. You know, that's not necessarily something that's, the minimum is not always desirable. It's just the minimum.
Well, the other thing I'm hearing is that we'd be the outlier if we just waive all this approach. We'd be the outlier in all the surrounding towns. Why would we be doing it completely different than everybody? I mean, if we've got a good reason to do it differently. I guess so. And I'm concerned somebody could pave 35 parking spots on their property and not have to submit any kind of plan or be monitored in any way.
If they needed approval from the Board of Adjustment or the Planning Board, it's not likely that the, you know, the boards are going to require something. And it's a lot easier if it's in the ordinance to require something. It's not just residents. It can be a small commercial development.
But how is that possible? Can you help me understand that? Because I thought we had to get permits for coverage, right? If you're changing landscape and stuff, so how would we not know about it?
Well, I don't think you have an ordinance for land disturbance. This minor development added that requirement. 2,500 square feet basically required that you, you know, it's classified as a minor development and that you do at least what you'd have to do for a soil conservation district, which is 5,000 square feet.
But if they were paving a driveway, if we just go with that example, that would be impervious coverage, and they'd have to submit a permit for that. Anyway.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. And that would be a permit that would come through zoning, and if they're still under the threshold of the amount of impervious coverage that they are allowed, which is based on your size of your lot, then, you know, it would get a pass from me.
So, but this ordinance isn't addressing impervious surface as a percentage of your lot. This ordinance is saying, what about stormwater?
Exactly.
Is that right?
Correct.
So, I mean, they're related items, but they're not the same thing.
Well, they're related because if you have too much impervious, you're required to have put in a stormwater facility, right?
But not until you get to 10,000 square feet, is what I'm understanding.
If you didn't have the minor, yes.
Danger, yeah. You can do anything under 10,000 if we took that out.
A little more, quarter acre.
If we take Councilman McQueen's approach, do we have any sort of stormwater management plan for anything under 10,000 square feet?
Well, you have the requirement for a roof over 500 square feet, which that's sort of stringent, I think. That's kind of a small addition, but that's in the ordinance. That's been in the ordinance since 97. I know that when I started. So that 500 square foot roof area needs to go into dry well. That was the only thing in the ordinance.
I have three triggers I look at, and that's 500 square feet of new roof, 1,000 square feet of impervious coverage, or 2,500 square feet of soil disturbance. Any of those three trigger stormwater.
And they would continue to do going forward?
If the minor development stays as it is, yeah.
Okay, and Councilman McQueen, you're not saying pull the minor development thing. You're just saying pull the inspection and deed restriction wording.
I'm saying pulling the yearly inspection wording.
Yeah, because I'm kind of like thinking, like, okay, so you get about half of these for the minor ones. Let me just stick on that, you know, turned in. So basically, you know, and the people who don't turn them in have, you know, I guess there's no consequence for that, to use, you know.
We could have a deed restriction, John.
Just wipe it for everybody until we can have something.
Right. I view this like your sewer system. If you have a septic system, it's your job as the homeowner to make sure your septic system is clean, right? It's also your job as a homeowner to make sure that you have appropriate real estate disclosures, and it's also the job of the Realtor when that transaction happens. So I'm not advocating the homeowner's responsibility for maintaining their stuff. What I'm doing is I'm getting rid of the reporting requirement. So, for example, I don't have to report to the zoning officer when I clean my septic system. Now, they're not exactly the same thing, but it's a similar thought process.
I don't necessarily think the septic system is a good analogy, because if it doesn't work, you're going to suffer. Whereas with the stormwater, if it doesn't work, your next door neighbor suffers. That's not a fair analogy.
Yeah, you're right. Good point, Jeff.
Well, it depends on how stinky the smell is, Jeff, and maybe it's all circumstances. Long as you're uphill.
So, okay, well, where we are right now is we need to introduce this at this point.
Not to blow, I just had, there was one little bit of smelly language. I just wanted a clarification of what it meant, if I could, real fast. There's several places where it says, present and future owners of the property containing privately owned stormwater management facilities are required to ensure long-term operation, blah, 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 blah. So when it says present and future owners, does that imply that at some point, if you sell the house and in the future something's wrong, that the former owner is now liable, who could be long gone?
No, no, I think a future owner may have some recourse against the seller if in fact the seller didn't maintain it and didn't disclose the existence of it, but that would be a private matter, would not involve the borough. If in fact the seller didn't maintain it and didn't disclose the existence of it, but that would be a private matter, would not involve the borough.
All right, just, well, then, I just want to clarify what that language actually meant, okay?
Understood.
Okay, so at the, at this point, can we introduce it?
Just to be at the point of clarification on the procedure, we introduce it now, because we're up against the gun, I guess, of like. The third, we can always pass it as, if it does get amended, in its whole twenty-second, Jack, right, passed as amended?
Yes, we, we, we can always go back. And amend later, as long as we meet, as Bob brightly said earlier, as long as we meet the minimum DEP requirements by the deadline. We can always make changes later, as long as we don't, you know. Affect those minimum requirements.
Oh, yeah, or on the twenty-second, we can make amendments, you know, during the conversation and pass it at that date.
As long as they're not substantial.
Yeah, if there's, if there's substantive amendments, we'd have to continue the public hearing on the ordinance as amended. We'd probably still be okay in that case with DEP because it was introduced and amended, you know, we could probably explain that away, but it would be better if we met the deadline, obviously.
But what, what I'd like to see happen in the meantime, is if we introduce it tonight, is that either we work out. I, I think as Councilman Hammond pointed out, that if we want to keep this, because I think in terms of what we're hearing about. Uh, where, where this water goes and how it affects our water system. That we either come up with a, a way to enforce it, or to make it easier on the homeowner to be able to report. You know, we want to help the homeowner do this correctly. We don't want to overburden the homeowner, but we also don't want to. Take a chance on having more runoff or neighbors suffering, or the streams getting more polluted. So we need to work out how that gets handled.
And that can be done after the deadline, because it involves a minor development, which is not mandated by DEP.
Right, you know, because we don't want to put a burden on a homeowner that, you know, you have somebody who's lived there for forty years and now this little old lady's trying to lift up a manhole, I get that. But there's gotta be a way that we can work with our homeowners to make sure we get more than half of those reports back and we know. That these systems are working. And are, you know, not impacting our, our water. So, can we do that in the meantime and just get this introduced and maybe Jeff Price and. Can, can help us work on how we can make that happen?
Uh, I mean, I, yeah, and Jeff, I just have one other question, and I don't know if you'll know the answer now, maybe we can talk about it in two weeks when the public hearing, but. You know, what would enforcement and reporting and things like that happen due to your office from an operational perspective? Like, what's the workload that would end up falling on? I'm assuming it falls on you and your team.
Uh, yes, well, if, Bobby said there was what, eighty-three?
Yeah, I, I think it, I think John McDowell is the Stormwater Management Coordinator, but there were eighty-three minors. We got thirty-nine back.
But, but Jack, could, can John act as an enforcement agency? Or is that, that comes under me?
That would still fall to you, Jeff, as the coded question officer.
All right. So the worst case then would be eighty-three inspector, other inspections every year.
I mean, would that, I don't know what the level of effort and stuff is, would that then fall for an additional person or part-time person or something? Or could you handle it with the existing team?
Well, we've got smoke inspections, we have fire inspections for resales. And we have four hundred plus home inspections. So neither of those two are really related to these eighty-three. So it would be a separate category, whether the two inspectors that I have can absorb another eighty-three, I'd have to look at that.
Well, if you get those, if thirty-some come back, you'd only be inspecting the difference, the one who didn't report.
Right, right.
It would may not be, and maybe the first step is to send them another letter reminding them and then the inspection, so that it's not like, putting as much work on you.
Right, and I, I think John, John collects the, the letters. Kathy correlates them and communicates with Bob. And then if, if there's no inspection report that arrives with thirty-plus homes, then they should be tossed over to me.
Okay.
So, I don't know, maybe Jeff and Tom, you guys want to talk about the operational implications here, I'd like to understand them before we approve it too.
Okay.
All right.
If we did go down this path that Councilwoman McCree was just talking about. Is it free for them to submit their own, you know, certification and then we charge to go out and inspect it if they fail to do that? Is that what we're talking about doing going forward?
We could.
Well, it seems like. If we're gonna send our workers out to do something that they can do themselves, uh, for free, then, you know, then we gotta cover our expenses. Plus, you might get higher compliance if that was the alternative.
Right, and I think, Bob, you said other towns do charge, yes?
The only one I know of is Bernard's Township.
They charge forever.
I'm sorry, they do charge, Bob? Yeah, they, they have a fee, a. I don't, off the top of my head, I, actually, I did, I printed their ordinance out, it was, uh. I want to say two hundred dollars. So Bob, when you said the only one you know of is Bernard's Township. Don't know of the other ones, or you know the other ones don't have it? Well, I, the, the ones that. That I know of, I did not see a, I just looked on the local, the ones right in the air. Yeah, they actually have a stormwater facility maintenance certification.
The Bernard's Township does charge an annual fee of two hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's two hundred. What you're, what Bob, by your answer, I'm trying to get me clear on your answer. Your answer was you don't know about the other towns, or you know the other towns don't have it? I don't have, I didn't, I didn't see it in Menneboro, Bedminster, or Four Hills.
One clarification, Bob, is that single-family homes aren't charged the fee in Bernard's Township.
Okay, that, that's good, I think that's good. So, Jack Pigeon, minor developments are charged two hundred dollars, but minor developments that are single-family homes are not charged the develop, the fee?
It appears that way, I, I just glanced at it quickly as we're speaking. There is no fee for individual, single-family homes. The, the, the first part of your question, I have to look at it more carefully.
Okay.
All right. Christine, would you like to introduce this?
I move that ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash eighteen-seventy-two. An ordinance amending stormwater regulations. And supplementing and amending section twenty-nine of chapter twelve in the Borough Land Use Code be introduced by title passed on first reading. Published according to law and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven PM. Monday, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one.
Second it.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay, um, and we do have, when, we have a meeting March eighth, Anthony? So should we amend or do anything, we could move it, we still have one more meeting, would we be able to do that, Jack?
Is it, say, I think we would, I think DEP would be satisfied if we had introduced and amended when we were adopting five days after the deadline.
All right, so that'll work out.
There's no guarantee, but I think, I think we'd be okay.
But just to clarify, Mayor, we have to pass something.
Yes.
So I mean, we can't not, really not introduce tonight, we have to, because we have to pass something, even if it's to Councilman McQueen's liking, we do have to pass something.
We, we have to pass something about major developments.
Right, but I'm just saying if we introduce it tonight and then it doesn't pass or amend it at the next meeting, if we then. Approve it the following meeting, we're only five days past the deadline, that still might not, wouldn't be a problem, because it was in process. Yes?
Yes, that's my feeling.
All right, good. Okay, um. Oh, we have, um, let's see, I guess this is finance, so. Mr. O'Day, would you like to introduce?
Yes, I moved that ordinance twenty-twenty-one eighteen-seventy-three, calendar year twenty-twenty-one. To exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. NJSA forty-A colon four dash four D five dot fourteen. Be introduced by title passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting. Beginning at seven PM on Monday, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Extentions? Okay. Um, Christine, oh, wait a minute, who's Public Works, is that you again? Yes.
Um, it's Gina now.
Me.
Oh, it's Gina, okay, all right, go ahead, you want to introduce the next one?
No, I actually, I mean, I can, but I have to pull it up on the.
I can, if you want.
Yeah, if you could, if you've got it handy, thank you.
I move that ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash eighteen-seventy-four, bond ordinance providing for the improvement. Of various roads in and by the borough of Bernardsville in the county of Somerset, New Jersey. Appropriating one. Million five hundred eleven thousand, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollar bonds or notes of the borough. For financing such appropriation, be introduced by title passed on first reading, published according to law. And that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven PM Monday, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one.
Second it.
I'll second.
Okay.
Thanks, Christine.
It's for those members of the public, this is for, if I have these right, Crestview, Chatskut, Ravine Lake, Wynwood, Washington Street, White Mack, and Prospect. I believe, or water in there, so those are the roads. So, do I have a, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yep.
Extentions? No, okay.
Hey, I just wanted to mention for the public as well, this is the completion of the ten million dollar bond that was approved by referendum back in two thousand and fourteen. As well as five hundred thousand dollars in grant funding that we received, uh, from various road projects in the past year. So, uh, wanted to mention where the funding was coming from.
Thank you, yeah, good point. Uh, resolutions twenty-one forty-five through twenty-one forty-eight. Any, the only, my only comment is overly road is spelled wrong. It's E I instead of I E. Just in the title, it's, it's right in the, in the resolution. Anybody else have questions to any of these? Nope. Let's see, John, you want to move them?
Hold on, I move, uh, resolution, we have resolutions twenty-one forty-five through twenty-one forty-eight. Put the right verb.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Donnie?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
There you go.
I, I didn't catch the, about, Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Sir O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. the mayor?
Yes.
Okay, um, six C, our diversity policy, we have a memo, why am I echoing? Do you hear me echoing?
I hear you echoing.
Yeah, everybody else should go on mute, probably.
We did have a, um. A memo from our attorney. With more information on the, um, the different. Training programs, so, um, I just had one question on the training that, I guess for Tom. Have we budgeted for the training? Is this gonna be a, a line item now in administration?
Mayor, I spoke to the labor attorney today and I just got an overview of the issue and, uh. I have not gotten into that level of detail of it yet.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was actually talking to Tom O'Day.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For finance.
I was wondering myself, no, I, I don't think we've specifically talked about this as a line item in the budget, but we have a meeting on Wednesday this week, so I'll bring it up. Do we have a total estimated cost for this?
We did, um, the, um, if, if we had embarked on all four courses, it would have been thirty-two dollars per person. But we've, we elected at the last council meeting to drop, um, some of the courses, so now it's really only down to two, so I don't have an exact number. But we're probably talking in the order of somewhere around fifteen to twenty dollars a person. So we're, we're not talking about thousands.
Twenty, twenty dollars a person times a hundred people, or?
Well, we don't have a hundred employees.
No, I know, but I didn't know if there were volunteers and others that were going through it, so I mean, we're talking about two thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred bucks, something like that?
So, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
I don't think it's gonna be an issue, but we'll make sure we put it as a line item in the budget.
Okay, so, um, what do we need to do at this point with? Do we need to enroll people? Where do we go from here?
Yeah, and sorry, just to clarify, because a couple of these are, they're, we're also doing the planning board members, the board of adjustment, and we're also allowing for. Other people to volunteer to take the course, even though they're not mandated to take the course. So I think we should look at the budget number and account for some percentage of volunteers to also. You know, want to take the course.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fair, also, I think, uh, um, our labor attorney had put in there that it has to be completed by the first, end of the first quarter. I think now that says we're already into the second month of the first quarter, I think that's a little burden of some, so probably would have made it the first half of the year.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, Finance Committee, can you discuss this Wednesday and?
Yeah, I just, we're gonna need some, sort of, somebody to make an estimate, I don't know if, uh.
Yeah.
Our administrator can do that for us, so we need a hundred percent of, uh, borough staff plus council members, I assume the mayor, and, uh. Chairs of committees, I think was the one we were gonna go with.
It was just the chair and vice chair of the planning board and the board of adjustment.
So are those four people, and then other, other people who volunteer to take it, uh, we'll have to make an estimate for those, but I would say maybe ten. Ten volunteers, did that sound reasonable to everybody?
Sorry, Tom, I just wanted to ask about the fire and EMT, are they required, or were they? I can't remember.
Uh, I don't think they're considered employees.
No, they're.
It would be desirable, certainly.
I don't think so, but, yeah.
They, they were considered volunteers, so hopefully they would, but, um, you know, they're, they're not required.
Okay.
It says it in here that they are.
They are? Okay, I'm wrong then.
Thanks for pulling it up, Christine.
It says it right in the first. You know, under number one of the memo, so this is.
So they're like fifty alone, I think.
Yeah, in fact, it says all members, not just.
Yeah.
Leaders.
We have that kind of jurisdiction over them, because they're their own corporation?
Well, we, we entered a contract with the fire company, so I guess as part of our agreement with them, we can require certain things.
Listen, it's highly desirable, but I, I remember our conversation about not, not, uh, burdening our, our ability to try to recruit volunteers. So I, I think that kind of runs counter to what our intent was.
I, I think we should just change the wording to encourage but not required, you know?
Well, it's just invited for the volunteers, so we can just include them in the invited and encouraged.
Yes, so. Yeah, so we're removing the last. Up the estimate from ten volunteers to maybe twenty volunteers then.
I don't know how many we have to.
I heard somebody just say fifty, so.
No, that's the fire and EMT, but I'm talking about all of the other committees and, you know, we have a lot.
We can just, we can just say that we have seats for the first twenty that volunteer this year, and then if we get more than twenty volunteers this year, we'll have to up it for twenty-twenty-two then.
That's reasonable.
Okay, so is everybody happy? We'll say twenty volunteers in addition to the required staff, Tom? And then, if you can get this, that's the head count for Wednesday's meeting, we can just put in the appropriate level of funding for those, those, that head count.
Will do.
Okay.
And Mayor, you are on mute, but I see you're trying to talk. Mayor, we can't hear you.
Trying to get rid of the echo, sorry, um. Did we say this is annual or every two years that we would ask people to go through the training?
Actually, I remember that we talked about it every, every three years. Actually, I remember that we talked about it every, every three years, because that was a term of a councilman, or a councilperson, I should say. We could make whatever we like, but I thought it's like the training, I, I, I make an analogy to the training we have to take about budgeting and finance.
Right.
You think that was when you're elected.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking in terms of volunteers, if we just do 20 each year, you know, we can spread them, rather than upping the number, the first 20 that sign up one year, then the next 20 could do the next year and so that it's a steady number, rather than...
I think that's an excellent...
The memo provides for biannual. But you can change that.
So, I think triannual makes sense, just because it, and, you know, we've made the committee assignments annual anyway, so all it says is if you're reappointed two years, you don't have to retake the course, you know, every year you're reappointed.
Yeah. Okay.
So, we're in agreement that we make a triannual, Jack?
That's fine with me, you guys. We can change it to triannual and we'll make it permissive for the fire department and EMP, emergency medical period.
With 20, 20 volunteers, the first 20 to sign up each year. Okay. So, really, the, the big expense will be the first time when everybody has to get it done, and then if it's three years out, or, or you get a new, new people.
Right.
You know, it'll be less in following years, so.
Yeah, I think that's going to work well that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you might, actually, that's a good point, Mayor, for attrition, Tom. If we lose and gain people, they're going to have to...
Right.
They might take up those 20 volunteer spots.
Yeah. We can always adjust it. I think for the mayor's point, we won't have our own borough staff in year two.
Right.
If we have a portion more volunteers, I don't think it'll be an issue financially.
Right.
Yep, and, and did Tom get a chance to review the policy? Because I think last time, and Tom, the business administrator, the, the, I know last time we were talking about, you know, a, a lot of different aspects of this, but we wanted to, you know, give you an opportunity, Tom, for when you start, welcome, first, first of all. And, you know, for you to have an opportunity to look at it and make sure that you're okay with being able to enforce and, you know, comply with what's in the policy as well.
Yeah, I did have, spent about 10 minutes with the labor attorney today who walked me through the history of it, some of the broader changes to the handbook, which we're putting aside for now. So, I will, I will look at the training costs and I'm confident that we'll be able to do that for the schedule established.
I could call you tomorrow also and give you a little bit of the history background from how this all unfolded.
Be great. Thank you.
Mayor, you're muted.
Doing this. I think correspondence, we didn't have any other than, we had something from Ed English. I don't know if he wanted to just briefly talk about his letter. I saw it here. Ed, are you here? There you are.
Yes, I am, yeah, I wasn't sure. Anyway, so, yeah, the markets, the winter market's going very well. There was, and I want to thank John McDowell and Kevin Valentine, Chief Valentine, for making it work even after that horrendous snowfall. But we did have a, a few Saturdays, we had cars parked there, and the ordinance is not really clear, because the ordinance in 2016 is, is for the farmer's market. So, I, I spoke to Chief Valentine today and he recommended that not, no change to the ordinance, but rather just use code 7:7-2, which allows a temporary sign to be put up for a, for the, for the winter market. And he gave me the specifications, they would be 12 by 18. They would fit right over the signs he put up for the farmer's market in 2016. They would be temporary. I spoke to Burnsville Print, they took them. So, I, it seems like that's the most expeditious and easiest way to go forward, unless there are some questions. Basically, we haven't had any problem, in fact, one, one person came down when, after the, I don't know if people are familiar with this, but if a car is parked illegally, it says towed, but usually the police politely called the resident and the resident, in this particular case, came down so quickly, she had a different shoes on each foot. She had two different shoes, I'm sorry, it was really confusing. But, but, so they, they always compliance, always works out. But it would be, just in case someone says, well, I read the ordinance and you can't do this, I'm going to keep my car here, then we'd have a problem. So, this would just, you know, take care of that issue if it came up. So, and the borough doesn't have to pay anything. I spoke to Burnsville Print, the farmer's market would pay for the signs. It's a minimal cost and, you know, we'd have it done quickly. The police department would put them up. We'd also put a sign on the barricades that I would put up Friday night, so, you know, people would know. And we haven't had, really had any problem, but it's, it's a precaution.
Ed, had the signs go up and down along with the market, or, or they stay up permanently?
No, the sign, well, there are now, there are signs since 2016 on, on posts that, that tell you when you can park and when you can't park. And we would put temporary signs over those signs, the exact size, 12 by 18. And they would stay up until, to the winter, winter market closes. The other signs on the barricades would come down, you know, each Friday night. But the others would stay up until, until, for the winter market.
Which would say like no parking Saturday, eight...
Well, actually, it would say no parking Saturdays, February 1st to March 31st, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Lila is subject to fine until Borough Code 7:7-2.
And each, each of this...
And is this on the entire parking lot, or just down, down the south side?
Yeah.
Just on the south side, yeah.
So, how does, how does a person parking their car know which spots are, are they each spot marked?
There's about, there's seven signs, so it, it, it's pretty clear, well, I, yeah, I mean, that's the way it's always been. I mean, someone like, I, I think they would apply to all the, there are like five signs on the 202 sign, and four signs and three on the other side. So, it's, they're spaced out, so it's pretty clear they apply to that area, not just the right side.
Yeah, but, you know, Murphy's Law, if something can be misunderstood, it will be. I think Councilman O'Day's got a good point. We may need to specify, we're talking about the south side. I could envision somebody pulling in...
They'll be on the south side, Jeff, they'll be on the south side.
No, no, hear me out. Yeah, I can see somebody pulling in, they see that sign, that's the first thing they see. You know, maybe they're coming in from the grain and feed sign. Then they think, oh, gosh, I can't park here in the whole lot. They don't know that it's just for that section.
Yeah. But I think the place... And why, why the hours? Because I know that area is heavily used for, for restaurants on the weekend, in the evening.
Not, not at 7:00, not from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, oh, 10:00 PM on... Uh, I'm not sure what...
Yeah, you said PM, if you said 10:00 AM, I would be okay. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I just got this from the chief today, I, I'm really just reading what he said. He asked me what are the hours. I, I think that the, the time has to be consistent with the time that's there before, so it would be from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM or 1:00 PM, so the farmers have, the vendors have a chance to leave.
I think that makes more sense than the...
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
The Councilman McQueen's point goes to...
Yeah, absolutely. But Jeff, to answer your point, it's always been that whole south, the south parking lot is, is, has been reserved in those, in those particular spots, below the shed down to Depot Place.
I know that, I know that, that's not the issue. The issue is, is we're telling people, and I've been down there with you when we've been calling the police to get people to move their cars. The issue is, is if somebody may misunderstand the signs and think that the entire parking lot is off limits, and that's what we want to avoid. The signs, the signs need to indicate that it's just that section, the south section of the, of the whole parking lot.
Well, okay, I, I mean, okay, I'm happy to, to change it. I mean, generally, most people, maybe because I'm a New Yorker, most people, if there's no sign, they park there. If there's a sign, they don't park there. And so, I don't think they're going to interpret it to mean in the north parking lot, they can't park there. I, I don't know, I mean, it's possible.
Yeah.
No, I think that's fine, I think people, besides which, they're not supposed to be entering off Depot Place, they're supposed to come in the main entrance.
Correct. I, I mean...
The mere fact that they do, the mere fact that they do tells, you know, says that we have people who don't necessarily follow the rules or, or understand the rules.
But I think what Ed's saying is it hasn't been a, a big problem. This is just to help him enforce it a little bit better.
There's no doubt, but, I mean, I think illegally parked cars there, you know, it does happen, not infrequently. At least, as I've been volunteering down there, I can remember at least three instances where it's happened. So, you know, it happens.
Let me just quickly ask a question. Ed, are all the signs being remade, or we're just remaking some signs right now?
No, we'd make like 10, 10 new signs, 10, 10 temporary signs. And the other signs would be, the other signs would stay the same, yeah.
The other signs meaning what, like the, the ones...
The ones that are there that say, I think they say Friday night at 12 to Saturday at 2. They're, it's a longer period and it's more established, because in the summertime, people, people do park there. It's only really on now, on, on Friday night that people park there. But some, and then the train station's really not used that much now. It was only when someone like came home late and forgot, or didn't come home and kept their car there that we had a problem. So, now we've, we only had, you know, a, a few instances and it hasn't been a problem. It, it's just...
My only suggestion would be, you know, if we have an opportunity to make the signs as clear as possible.
Yeah.
Rather than remake the signs in a year from now, if we could just try and make them worded so they, they'd be less chance for misinterpretation.
Absolutely.
This is our opportunity to do it, if there's a slight wording change that might be beneficial, that'd be great.
Great, great, that is a good point.
I'm concerned, I mean, Tom, I'm hearing the conversation here, and I'm hearing what, what Jeff's saying here. I think there's a huge potential that this gets misunderstood.
Can we just say something like this section, no parking?
No, I mean, look, if, if there are a couple of spots you're going to put no parking due to farmer's market, and I would be specific to the farmer's market from 7:00 AM until 2:00, I would put them right in the spots. I wouldn't...
We've got one sign every five spots is the way I understand it, I mean, I'm...
Close, yeah, it's about that, yeah.
Yeah, so it's like one sign for every five spots, you know? If it says, it says like between, no parking between these signs and it had arrows at the end, you know, so, so that people could understand.
And again, very specific, very specific with the terms.
I think relatively minor risk, I mean, I kind of follow Ed's logic, where if, you know, if any prohibited, I'm assuming it's okay. And I saw a bunch of signs there, but no signs up there, I'd park up there, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, I like the, if you just have the arrows saying no parking, you know, with both ways, rather than adding more signs.
Right, yeah.
That would be clearer.
Yeah, we can't really do that because we'd have to put in more posts.
Right. But if just arrows saying between, you know, between signs, no parking, you know, any of these spots or whatever, just so it's...
Yeah, no parking these spots or something like that, that's a little bit, because then you're like, well, I'll look for other spots then.
Right, there's no sign right here, so, yeah.
I don't know.
I think we should ask the chief what's enforceable, because it all comes down to that, and maybe get his recommendation.
I, I would before I do anything, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, they have to sign off on it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor's update. Yeah, I'm really sorry I missed Ralph's last meeting. Since I was there for his first, I feel bad that I missed his last. But I want to welcome Tom Jurnietzky. Glad to have you, our first meeting, your first day, so, you know, you're, you're still here, so that's a good sign, you showed up tonight. So, yeah, and it was a, I think the Burnsville News did a nice story, so hopefully people will know who you are and we look forward to working with you. This is kind of exciting. And what did I say, I think you're the third administrator in 46 years or something like that, so.
Yeah, well, thank, thank you for the welcome. The staff has been incredible, I've, during the transition period, while I was leaving my old job, trying to come here. Ralph was great and all of you spent a lot of time with me, so I couldn't have asked to be more prepared to hit the ground running. So, I look forward to working with the community and the council.
Thank you. What else did I do? On the 13th, I think I had mentioned, we had a meeting scheduled with the Transit Village Committee, which is the first step in the application process. There's a lot of information that we have to put together, but the group that we met with, their feedback was very positive. They liked all the things we were doing. They pretty much said they don't really ever turn anybody down. It's just that, you know, they work with you through the process because they want you to get the designation and there's not a deadline for the application. So, we'll start working towards that and I think as it should coordinate with our Quimby Village project. And the advantage to getting that designation is there's a lot of, a lot more grant money available. So, we're starting that process. I did attend, and so did Jeff and Christine, the Last Somerset County Governing Officials Association meeting. They have rescheduled their gala for June, I think that's the third time it's been rescheduled. It was supposed to be, the speaker was supposed to be Colleen Marr, who's the new county administrator, but she was ill. So, County Commissioner Morano did an overview of the county's year. Starting, well, it started February 3rd, the county clerk and surrogate offices in Somerville will be open on Wednesdays until 6:00 PM to have more hours available for people who are working. Somerset County is the first in New Jersey to be recognized by AARP as an age-friendly community. The county LGBTQ plus advisory board is going to be offering seminars, so we should be getting information on that. And I thought this was fascinating, they processed 412,000 pounds of hazardous waste, recycled 31,000 tons of materials. There are 14,800 acres of open space, 8,100 acres of farmland, and they provided 180,000 meals to residents. So, here for the training. Their next meeting is this Wednesday, so if anybody wants to attend, it's a Zoom meeting. And Anthony Kava, who is the president and CEO of Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital Somerset, will be the keynote. Now, the county call last week, they brought up again the Hope and Healing Program. That's a free program for people having any mental health issues due to COVID. If they've lost jobs, they're dealing with grief. So, if you know anyone, you can have them reach out to the county. They also announced open space grants for recreation projects, which I shared with Bob Marklewick, and he is working on getting one in, I think, I think Bob, you're here, either for the walking path or pickleball courts. So, that would be great if we could get some county money for those. Downtown Burnsville Board Meeting, they are putting together the sponsor package. There have been painting sessions for the mural with Saturday the 22nd, or not, Thursday the 22nd, Saturday the 30th of January, and then this past Saturday. The next one is Saturday night, this coming Saturday night, the 13th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM as a date night, and then Saturday, the 20th, from 10:00 to 1:00. And we have a link on our website, so if you want to sign up, you can, it'll take you right to downtown Burnsville's calendar to book a half hour to paint. We will be doing the unveiling on Memorial Day after the parade and we're working again with recreation to try and make it a whole day event. I just attended this morning a legislative briefing by the League of Municipalities on these Assembly Bills 1571 and 1576. Very scary bills that impose prevailing wage on any public work properties that are receiving either a tax payment or a tax exemption or pilot program, which will also affect affordable housing. I don't know if this is being advocated by the trade unions. There's a lot of groups opposed. They've put together a statewide coalition to try and oppose these bills because what will happen is if developers, like any projects in the pipeline, like our Quimby Lane project, what makes them the carrot we have to attract a developer is really the pilot program. So if you then say they have to pay prevailing, and prevailing wage is very different than minimum wage. Minimum wage is $15 an hour. Prevailing wage would be $115 an hour. If these developers have to pay prevailing wage, the impact it will have on projects is they have to increase density or height, or in order for them to have any return on investment on these kinds of projects. So we're having another meeting next week, trying to get as much momentum to try and stop these bills from going forward.
Mayor, can we as a borough go on the record opposing this? Because that could be absolutely disastrous to our
Yes, again. Absolutely. And it also will affect our affordable housing because it will have to apply to those projects that we're trying to build. So.
Does the municipalities have sample language that we could, the resolution language?
The league is going to provide us with resolution and letter language to send it to our legislators. Because I think it's already gone through one committee at the assembly and it's sent to another committee. And I noticed that Brian Bergen is on one of them and Tony Bukos on the other, who are our people that are on those.
Yeah, I, I talked to Mr. Buko four days ago. Maybe I'll reach out to him and get his thoughts.
Yeah, because this is, and every town that was on this call, it had this reaction about how it'll just kick these redevelopment projects.
This would be devastating.
Devastate economic recovery. You know, we won't be able to, to move forward with any of these projects.
What are the numbers on these bills, Mayor?
What I say was 15, it's Assembly Bill 1571 and 1576. I forget what the, there's a Senate one version too. The Senate version.
If you look at the Assembly one, it'll tell you the companion bill.
Oh, yeah. It's 19, Senate is 1956.
1956? Can you repeat the Assembly Bills 1571 and 1576? Is that what you said?
Yes. Yeah. So it's, I think it said it's already gone through, which one was it? Which committee? The Appropriations Committee? And now it's going to the, I think, Labor Committee. So. Yeah, it's, it's been moving along very quickly. So hopefully the league will give us that language. We'll get it moving and respond. But feel free to call and speak to anyone you can.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Sending Aura and Buko in.
Yeah.
We don't know who the sponsor is right off the top of your head, do you?
I do not.
No, look it up.
Yeah. And you can read it, you know, if you go to the legislative website, you can read their proposed bid, bill. And that's my report.
1571 is primary sponsors Huddling, Egan, Murphy, D'Angelo, Downey. Co-sponsors Wayne, Tully, Danielson, Vernelli, Connolly. No one I recognize from up here.
But there are a lot of, there's a lot of names there. That's, that's disturbing.
Yes, that is disturbing. The Senate Bill primary sponsors Sweeney, which is a bad sign as well.
And they, they, what they said at the league is these have come up in the past, similar bills, and they've quietly gone away. But for some reason, these now seem to have gained a lot of momentum. So.
Well, I guess it may be in the final language. Hopefully there's a lot of exemptions and waivers that we might be able to take advantage of if it passes. But we'll see.
Yeah. Even if there's some concessions made or, yeah, some amendments or something along the way, but the goal is to kill them. Stop. Okay. So do we have any unfinished business?
It's not really officially unfinished business, but I, I think we had a lot of discussion tonight about roads and public works. And I think we deserve it. Our Public Works Department deserves a shout out in, in, in public for the really Herculean job that they did with this recent storm. This one was pretty impressive. We had an entire winter's snowfall in one fell swoop. So they, they did a really great job. Our, our roads were very well maintained and very safe. And a big thank you to, to our Public Works crew.
Absolutely. And a lot of people commented on the bubble as well. And it's nice to see the residents also being appreciative of, of the work they do. Because that was some storm. And the amazing part is we didn't lose power. That was just phenomenal. I don't know how that happened.
I'd also like to comment. My wife traveled to work both days and it was snowing heavily at Maristown Memorial Hospital. And she said as she transited the roads, some of our roads were some of the best cleared roads that she had to transit.
Good to hear. Yeah. They did a great job.
Mayor, I have an initial piece about unfinished business. Do you know, has the committee met yet on the, on the RFPs that we have in the House regarding the Audi?
Yeah, the only one we're dealing with right now is the Audi 65 Maristown Road. Last I heard, Joe DiMarco is trying to set up a meeting with the developer who put in a proposal. And I think the owners and the attorneys and Topology to just, you know, find out where this, where they all are, where they are in terms of the sale and the other information. They're supposed to be working on a concept plan. Because what was required in the RFP was some kind of concept plan, which they didn't give us.
Okay. So we still have outstanding information then?
Yeah. And then as soon as we have that, we'll have the Redevelopment Committee meet and review it and then bring it forward to the council. So, and then the, I guess the Quimby Lane is due, when is this? Jack, do you remember? The end of February? No, that's
The train station.
That's the train station is the end of February.
Yeah, train station's due February 26th. Quimby, I don't remember.
I guess the 18th. I guess number 18.
Oh, February 18th. Okay.
I believe, yeah.
What is the train station?
Is the, no, the
And we did get some questions on that, right? So there were some clarifying questions from some developers on Quimby. And the train station, I know there was an issue. We had gotten some correspondence from Dan Lincoln about the historic, because the question was the, the counter that's in the middle, whether that could be removed or not. And Dan seemed to think it couldn't be, which kind of chased away one of our proposers.
Yes.
It seemed to think, yeah, I was going to say seemed to think or no, two different things maybe.
I don't know. He had sent an email.
I thought, I thought the historic designation applied to the outside structure, not the inside.
No, didn't apply to the inside as well. Dan kind of took a position that it was protected.
Yeah.
And then communicated with the state to confirm that.
I'd like to see that writing from somebody, you know, in authority says that.
It's not an official opinion from the state. It was just a confirmation of.
If, if we're starting to lose bidders, we better have an official opinion.
I agree.
How do we get that, Jack?
I can reach out to SHIPPO. The problem with reaching out to SHIPPO is you rarely get the answer you want.
How do we go to get the answer we prefer?
My last experience with SHIPPO was for the sidewalks up on Sideview, that they had to be blue. So it's, but I, I will check further and report back. I don't want to say too much.
Okay. Yeah. If we can verify that, because I would hate to lose some potential good bidder, but, you know, piece of furniture. Yeah. Any new business?
Yeah. Sorry. I wanted to, for, on, on old business, I wanted to ask about any input on the RFPs too. But I was more curious about, you know, inquiries and stuff on Quimby and all the other stuff we were doing to kind of promote and try to get the word out. Has there been good progress there or?
Anthony, you've been.
Yeah. I, I sent it out to about 10 developers that, that Topology had and a couple that have sent me some interest. So, so an email went out to, to about 10 developers about the RFP being due on February 18th. So it has gotten out. It's been on the website as well.
Yeah. And I think it was in some, some magazine too, didn't they? I think Topology.
Topology may have done that. Yeah. But, but I did send an email to a number of developers.
And, and I think I asked this last time too. So sorry if I'm a broken record, but did we reach out to the people who had responded to the original RFP as well? That we put on this and like?
I believe, I believe they were on that, that, that list of the 10 or so developers. Yeah.
Okay. But we didn't reach out to them separately and explaining why we went back out to RFP and? Anything?
No, I just had a list of, of developers that Topology gave me and I sent them out the notice that, that's on the website. So this way they don't have to go looking for it. It went directly to them. Some of them may have originally, you know, submitted the, the RFP, but.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know.
Tom, I'm assuming that you're going to jump in with both hands on this stuff. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. I just feel bad for the, I, I know I harp on it because I feel bad for the ones that did put in for the RFP. They did all that past work. I feel like they should get some kind of preferential treatment isn't the right word, but some kind of explanation and understanding of, of where we are.
Exactly right.
The problem there was the, the plan had to be in place before we could really do anything with them. So we had to follow a sort of a tick box.
Yeah. No, I know. But I feel like we owe it, we owe an explanation to them specifically because they did a lot of work, right? It takes time and money to put these proposals together. So, you know, it's not really fair that we're just like, oh, oh, yeah, we were supposed to do all this due diligence stuff. And yeah, we'll go back and do that now. Thanks for all your work. But, you know, I don't know. I think we just owe them.
I think you have a good point. They may also think that we rejected them and that's why we haven't been back out. So they may not know.
No, actually, I, we've had several conversations with them and they keep calling and checking on what the status was. So I have talked to, I think, all three of them at one point, you know, letting them know where we were in the process. So I think they, yeah. And actually, one of them is now one of the people on the Audi developer group. So, yeah, he's interested in that as well.
Okay. Yeah. As long as we've just reached out to them, because I feel like we owe it to them. And like, I would feel responsible from a council perspective, even though I wasn't on before, that, you know, we didn't kind of try to right our wrongs kind of thing. Okay. And then I am.
I, I don't know that we set up an expectation that we were going to go to bid and, and, and release a project with the original RFP. When you say right our wrongs, I'm not quite clear what that's referring.
And I just think that we went out to RFP and I thought one of them were supposed to be getting, I mean, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought one of them were supposed to get the job.
I don't think that was the intent of the original.
It wasn't? It was only informational purposes or whatever?
More conceptual, I think. And I think that that was explained to all the people who responded.
And they knew.
Definitely don't think righting a wrong is the right way to characterize.
Fair. Fair. Okay. Good. Then I just want to make sure that, you know, we're giving them the opportunity to come back to finish what they started.
I think we definitely should encourage them.
Say it like that.
And, you know, we did meet with them. We invited, I, I think, Mayor, I can recall two different.
Yeah, that's right. We had you and John with them, along with Joe DiMarco a couple of times.
Was it two of the three or was all three?
It was all three. It was all three.
But I mean, it, it wasn't just a complete, you know, black hole that the information went into previously. We did get back to the responders and we did talk to them about ideas where the borough was doing, what our plan was going forward.
Okay. That's good to know. I didn't know. So that's why, because I, that's why I said, I think I had asked it a while back as well. So. And then I just want to recognize Bob and Jeff because they're the only two people who typically show up to our meetings. And since Bob has started, Bob has been here almost at every meeting. And, and Jeff, of course, is one that usually shows up. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Bob, I, yeah, I'm sorry. I mentioned before about, do you want to say anything about the county grants while you're here?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Hey, Mayor.
Hi.
Hey, Bob. I enjoy these meetings. Local politics is great. Yeah. I was looking into the pickleball one. I had a couple of vendors coming up before this storm. So it's going to be hard for me to get a quote good enough to send it. It might take me a few more weeks for the snow melt. They can see the topology over there and give me an accurate quote. So right now it's just kind of like a, you know, based on other municipalities of the region. It's just a ballpark figure I'm looking for, for the grant. But I have it all in the works. Once I can get some secure vendor quotes on that, I'm going to send it right in. And I've been talking to the county about it.
So Bob, when you say the topography over there, what area are you talking about?
By the, the basketball courts, the, the parking lot over there.
So the parking lot would still exist or a portion of it would be used for this air, the, the pickleball?
Right. A portion of it would be used. There'd still be access to the pool. And, you know, also discuss some stairs coming down from the pool lot if, if that was necessary, if we wanted overflow parking up there. That could be good for the basketball court as well.
And is a pickleball, pickleball court about half of the tennis court? Is that about the size?
Uh, yeah, you could actually fit three or four in a tennis court. So, yeah, they're, they're much smaller.
So, so is the plan I have, I'm sorry, maybe I missed it, but how, how many pickleball courts are we talking about?
Um, we're talking about four. I'm going to, I have a group of seniors in the community that I'm going to, they're prepping them to bring to council this idea, and they're going to speak on it. A lot of them have played at other places, currently playing indoor. I think Burnsville has a couple of teams of seniors represented in different parts of the, the county. You know, so I'm going to have a few people from that group speak to council within a few meetings about this project. Just to show the interest and let them speak on it because they're very excited. We had them speak at the rec committee meeting and that was great. But I'm going to bring them to council and they're very passionate about it.
Once you build it, they will come.
Yeah. And I think, you know, we have the first steering committee meeting on Wednesday. I'm just going to talk about Branson Center Carol with this because I think it's going to come through a big there. And obviously have their support before I put this grant in. But I talked to them on numerous occasions and it's.
No, that's right. Yeah. I forgot to mention that we'll be hearing back from Branson Center.
Yeah. I gave them the last information they required this morning. From their end, they said they have everything now. So two steering meetings tomorrow, I think Wednesdays. And then I'm hoping by March, they're going to give a draft to.
Great. Good. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Okay. Any other new business?
While Bob is on, I should tell him about how happy all the moms of, or the parents are about the skiing. Everybody is very singing your praises that I talked to about the ski, ski trips. So very good work on that.
Yeah, we're going to have, we're looking to have one more day and that's going to be a, a family fun day. Working that out with the mountain where it's going to be parents and kids at the mountain for a discounted rate. So we're trying to do that on a Saturday. Yeah, skiing is going great so far.
Bob, is that just for people who've previously signed up? Or is it open to more people?
No, anyone that would want to go up that day would get a discounted rate. There's no limit on that either. You'd have to sign up ahead of time just because of the COVID. You know, that's mountain restriction, but that would be for anybody in the community.
Is there a date yet or that's still in planning?
We're going to find out after our ski trip and then we're going to, we're going to get it.
And then we'll put something up on our website or something.
Yep. It'll be advertised. We'll advertise it for Community Pass, Facebook, Family Ski Day at the mountain. And we'll get some feedback from the, the parents as well that are bringing it, that are helping us with the trip. The chaperones and stuff like that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Yeah. I've seen a lot of positive comments on Quimby too about the ski trip.
They tried to get me to go on the ski trip because I am a skier, but not quite yet. You're the last one.
You still got that whole one to deal with, right?
Yeah, I got to get permission.
Okay. So we are now ready for closed session and we are not coming back out. Am I correct?
I don't have anything. I don't know what to do with this.
Okay. Do I have a motion for a closed session?
I'll move to closed session.
What's that again?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?